United States of America and to rip all of it for which it stands when a nation under
invisible with liberty and justice world.
Yes, before I begin, comes on here in the okay. Um, as recorded by Montana Wall, members of the community are given an opportunity to make brief comments aboard on any matters not included during the agenda. Individuals wishing to be heard shall first be recognized by the chair. Individuals after identifying themselves would please proceed to make brief comments. Board would like to remind everyone to avoid violation of individual rights and privacy. A member of the public wishing to address the board would not be allowed to make comments about any student, staff member, or member of the general event. No action may be taken on any matter discussed in public comment section. So such times that matters specifically noticed on an agenda probably because by the way, I'll be on it. You have any? Comment from on a non that I can write and stop. It would just kind of the volume and the station it goes to.
Uh, good evening. My name is Scott Weiss and I'm here to introduce a new organization called the Belgrade Orchestra Enrichment Council. It is a nonprofit five oh one C three founded for the sole mission of supporting our Belgrade orchestras. Both middle school and high school students, their incoming teacher and parents in all the existing disciplines and programs within the orchestras. This group is made up of parents and students. Uh, but it is not, but it's not a district sanctioned booster club or PTK. We stand alone specifically for the benefit of the orchestras. While we recognize that the Panther music boosters are there to spread their support to all the music programs equally. We must recognize that Belgrade orchestras have a disproportionately larger enrollment and therefore require more support from the district, the parents in this community. The Belgrade Orchestra Enrichment Council is here to hopefully bridge the gap from what one teacher created and ran long. Will certainly now require a dynamic and driven orchestra director backed by a host of eager parents and students to help support your orchestra programs. With additional fundraising measures and a network of outside talent and energy. We are prepared to work directly with the district, our administrators and the boosters to support and offer guidance through our incoming orchestra director. And to be available to help with countless tasks that this teacher will be shoulder. We also have some ideas that could make this transition more seamless. But time is of the essence. We must move on such discussions immediately. As you know, we have been communicating the email on the next step of meeting with you. Our administrators and our group and look forward to a very positive relationship that benefits our amazing musicians.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Thank you.
Well, Scott, great. They're dealing with time and coordination and there is a meeting scheduled. Any of these are shouldn't participate that well. So just reach out to me. But do you have any other public comment or pursue? Okay. Not seeing any, I guess we would resume with our student and staff recognition, the Wendy's donation.
All right. Well, we are very pleased to have a special guest with us in the group. Who is the district manager for um Wendy's for this area. Okay, um, and our local Wendy's Winthana LLC has generously donated five thousand dollars to support our summer meals program. This donation will play a crucial role in ensuring that students have access to nutritious meals during the summer break, supporting their health and wellbeing. We extend our sincere gratitude to Wendy's for their impactful contribution to our school community. We'd like you to come up and shake your hand and take a picture and give you a little certificate.
Help me to take the head.
You have anything?
No.
Our marketing department takes care of this all. Well, we um this was a lot of this. First case, so the support that you mean, oh no, it's not always true. We're happy to do it.
Yeah. So then that was over here.
Between them two.
There we go.
Awesome. It was so nice to meet them.
It's nice meeting you too. Thanks for coming.
All right, uh, we'll continue with our superintendent support.
All right, um, we have some information in our board both we um asked our graduating, see here's what they're doing with their lives after they leave Belgrade School District. So we have a hundred and thirty five of a hundred and eighty nine, almost two hundred students who graduated this year and complete the questionnaire. Uh, fifty two students said they were going to a four year college. Twenty six students, they said they were going to a two year college or trade school. Thirty eight students were going to work. Three students were joining the military and sixteen students said other. Um, so it's good to have that information and we just wanted to share that out with you. Um, as you may know, there's been a federal spending hold on title two, title three and title four grants to all school districts around the country. Um, for the Belgrade School District that um comes out to based on last year's number about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That if the whole is perpetual, then um we won't receive that those funds. Um, so what we're doing right now is building the budget for next year. The board looks at the budget in August and approves that. So we're building our budget around, you know, the understanding that potentially those funds won't be released. Um, so that in addition to not passing a hundred and sixty five thousand dollar, no levy in the spring. Um, you know, adds up to a good amount of money. Um, title two, three and four dollars were um we have been using to support our teacher mentor program. To support instructional um coaches in our schools. Um, to support our uh, the work that we do to support English language learners. Um, to support our um grow your own program, which is paraprofessionals who are ready to. Who are who are interested in becoming um teachers and we um are able to provide some support for their um schooling with that. Um, and then there are a number of other programs that fall into that. So. We're working on figuring out what that's going to look like if the funds aren't released. We've heard that we should know by September. Of course, that doesn't help with an August's budget, but um so um we're just keeping an eye on that. And the land and building exchange update, here we are in our newest building. Um, the, so we're going to hold board meetings in here in the old city library, um probably for this month and. Hopefully by next month, we're ready to move across the street into city hall and the city hall chambers. And that's where our meetings will be from then on. The cit- the um city council is moving their meetings into the new library. So once they have vacated, we can put our camera systems and everything we're required to do um and go ahead and move in there. So hopefully um. For our August meetings, we should be in there, but we'll keep everybody updated still about. Uh, we're almost completely moved out of the heck building. We have um our staff who was uh working in the heck building in here now. Um, and um the city's excited about the work that they're going to start to be able to do to shift that to the police and court building. So. Um, it'll probably be another six months to a year before our other offices are moved over here. Cause they have to get heck renovated and have the police move over there and then we can start kind of this interesting transition or shared spaces for a while. So that's what I have.
Good. Thanks, uh, District Clerk, Carrie.
Um, let's see. Um, one of the things I have is we're working that House Bill three thirty two that was passed, not this legislative session, but this legislative session before. That was to build a health insurance trust statewide for school employees. Uh, that is getting off the ground and starting to to develop their um reaching out this week. They sent us a warning email last week that they'd be coming um wanting information from us about our participation rates and. Previous uh claims, things like that. Um, and then they're hoping to get us rates in August or September. So we're um interested to see how that's all going to turn out and if the trust is going to be a great fit for our district. Or if we should stay with the insurance company we have. I'm hoping the trust will work great because. They've worked really hard on getting it put together with that legislative mandate or opportunity, not really a mandate. It's more of an opportunity. Um, it's our fiscal year end, so we're working on getting our payroll, finance, HR, all wrapped up. Um. A lot of the end of the year stuff comes down to um double checking line item budgets. Did everything get coded where it was supposed to go? Did everything? We started this work kind of in May and so we're still wrapping it up though. We're still processing invoices from June. Um, that are coming in, things like that, that come out of last year's budget. So. We're, we're pretty busy and we're gonna, the next three weeks will be. Kind of crunch time for our office to get all the state reporting done and build our budget for the next year um by your August board meetings. And then um taxable valuations, a lot of homeowners are just now in the mail getting their taxable valuations. I'm sure all of you have probably gotten yours if you live in Belgrade. Um, my personal tax valuation, my home went up, but my taxable value went down. Um, and that's not uncommon when you have more properties coming on the tax rolls. That's how it should work. Um, you shouldn't um be going up, so. So hopefully we'll know by August fourth, what the actual taxable value for the whole district is. The Department of Revenue is required to release that information the first Monday in August to schools and that's what I use to do your guys' budget. So. It's a one week window for me to plug in all that information. So we'll be ready for it though.
Thanks, Carrie.
Mm-hmm.
For Carrie. Before we move on to the board report, may we remember something that you'd like to show?
Our expectation committee is met and uh working on you uh looking at uh new student. Tracking the system or possibly continuing on. I don't know, DDs that I've been receiving emails on there and then we're also crafting some policy. For the operation of these new fortune passes, the buses that'll be here sometime between now and next morning.
Okay, thanks, well. Uh, technology department, like.
Good evening. That's Carrie said we're working towards the closing out our year uh for. The help desk, uh, we've received eight thousand twenty five tickets uh for the twenty four twenty five school year. You can see the breakdowns of the different categories of those help desk tickets. Uh, I went back this weekend looked, uh, we were about uh just over eleven hundred tickets. More than the previous school year. So we are increasing the amount of uh work that we're doing across the district. I think that's. Partially because we're doing a better what system tracking the tickets that come in, uh, so maybe not a giant increase in the amount of work that we're doing. Um, but there is, you know, some increase of what we kind of for the year. Uh, multi-factor authentication, uh, it was, if I remember correctly, the board requested that we increase um. Our due diligence on getting MFA implemented in the district. So we are looking to enable multi-factor authentication for all the staff affected August fourth. Our first emails went out to notify the staff on July the ninth. Uh, I kind of wanted to do it, you know, the week before, uh, things just didn't work out the way I wanted. Uh, cause I wanted to give a full month of notification for the first notification, but they will. Continue to send more notifications out uh as time progresses, making sure people understand what's coming, what alternatives there may be. Um, in getting this implemented. I think it's good that we take this stance now before our insurance company requires it. Um. But I think it, moving forward and making sure that all of our student data is protected is what we need to be doing. We're working on our district inventory of hardware. Uh, we're working this summer to go through all of our schools uh and. Break our inventory management system up to where we want it to be, uh, keeping track of everything across the district. Uh, laptops, Chromebooks, smart panels, document cameras, everything. To go along with our inventory that we're trying to complete, we um want to do our device to be fresh cycle. So normally as things come, you purchase items that go through a life cycle, you dispose of items. What that framework really is going to look like for our district. We're coming up on some interesting hardware requirements. Uh, we have a lot of laptops that are not available. Not able to do the Windows ten to Windows eleven conversion. Windows ten expires in October of this year. Uh, so we're working on different options to make sure that we can take care of those devices. Uh, shifting Chromebooks in some locations and refreshing some of our hardware. So that's all in, in the life cycle that we're going to be proposing. Uh, I hope to have it done probably mid-January. Uh, after we get the inventory done, as long as the inventory is really linked by the end of August, I'm pretty sure that that timeframe in January is the goal. Uh, for our long range technology plan, uh, again, that's going to go back to you, making sure that we get good inventory, get our good device refresh cycle in place. And then what does it look like for a budget, how we're going to move forward? In the next several years to maintain the hardware we have, uh, and that's. Going to determine what our refresh cycle is. So each plan, each of these different items are going to build on the next. Any question?
Questions, Mike. It's Mike. And that brings us to our direct Department of Streaming and Shooting.
Hey, uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, we wanted to touch base earlier than this, but we needed some reviews. Um, and some pretty extensive reviews that we've done. Uh, our goal uh from my department and Mike's department and the other two departments create a guidebook for AI integration into Belgrade. Um, so what we were showing you in simply is the guidebook itself uh and the purpose behind this. Uh, and why? So why do we need a guidebook called AI is anywhere it's here to stay? Um, and we were speaking earlier today, it's been in practice for a long time. It's just not. It's more mainstream now because it's accessible to everyone, something like chat G T or. Or whatever, but there's many, many, many uh uses for it and using it in medical imaging for protection. Uh, your Netflix videos, uh, YouTube, it uses AI algorithms. It's been around for a long time. Um, but our goal is preparing our students for what their future looks like. AI is in their lives right now. Uh, it's trying to make sure that they use it ethically responsibly. Teachers use it ethically responsibly. And uh, we think it'll help foster some serious critical thinking skills as long as we're being very due diligence about using it. Uh, this isn't me, we're going to open it up free reign for AI, everything. There's an extensive vetting process on it. So. Uh, so the purpose of the guidebook, number one is to get everybody to understand what AI is. And we'll be doing that through staff meetings and trains. Uh, potential uses of AI in schools. And there's many, many, and we have a few listed here in another slide. And then the process for acquiring acquiring actually a common to our staff member. Um, and how that process looks. The number one thing that we want to maintain in all of this is human oversight. Um, there's an interesting interview that I just uh watched a couple of days ago from the gentleman who created chat G P T. He was shocked that people use it as much as they do and believe in everything that comes across the computer. Uh, it's only as good as the algorithm and the information that pulls from, so we need to maintain constant human oversight of it. But some potential uses of it, education, we can analyze data with it. Um, we can generate drafts and that's why it's underlined drafts, a presentation again, whatever pulls up. We need to, as a teacher or a staff member, that's full or anybody else, review it and make sure that the information is correct. Uh, according to the best of your knowledge, uh, it can use for, students can use it for ideas. Foster some creativity, it can personalize learning. Uh, we can use it for assessment grading, it can provide feedback, um, such like grammar, uh, spelling, those kinds of things. But some factors we wanted to consider is uh citing the use of AI and you use it just like if students using it, using it like any other resource that's out there. If you're using information in a paper, uh, you're going to cite it, you're going to need to cite it, digital, digital citizenship. Is what that falls under, so avoiding plagiarism. Um, making sure that anything we use follows COPA for compliance. Uh, that is a huge concern with AI, making sure that we're doing that. That's where Mike's department comes in. And then again, instruction regarding AI and accuracy, some of it is misleading, some of it is bias. Uh, again, it all depends on what information that's pulled from to give you what you're asking for. So being again. Uh, cognizant of that and using your human oversight to look at. What it's not going to do in Belgrade is it's not going to replace our teachers. You cannot duplicate the human interaction that our teachers do with kids on a daily basis. And it's not going to replace our district materials. We are still requiring teachers to use the district resources that we provide. And make those relationships with kids. We don't want. Like a better word, robots teaching our kids. So we still want that one-on-one interaction with students. So the review process essentially goes through the AI guidebook in the back of it. There's a pretty extensive checklist. Part of it is for the teacher to fill out, part of it is for my, me and my department to fill out, part of it is for my department to fill out. Um, so if they submit something asking for a specific tool, uh, tech department reviews it, my department reviews it. And if either one of us say no, it's shut down. If both of us say yes, then we go to the next step where we would uh do some professional development on it, train the teachers pilot it, look at it a little bit dead better. What are the more potential uses that we can get out of it? But the check sheet on the back of that um AI guidebook, it's got, it goes into some pretty good depth on.
Oh, I have an extra slide on.
So next steps is we're going to uh go around and train our staff about what AI is. Uh, some potential pilot opportunities and then our end tech committee that's made up of a lot of teachers at all levels. Uh, reviewing uh tools, potential pilot ideas. Uh, and instructional strategies and uses for these things in our school. So that's where we're at with our AI guidebook. Any questions from that? Yes, this is the question. Yes. That's it. Mike, Mike did a tremendous job on the guidebook. We've probably reviewed it and revised it four times.
Yeah, pretty, pretty detailed.
Yeah, it was a lot longer.
And it's good.
But it's thorough.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. The other pieces is anything technology wise is always outdated. We need to do it. So we're going to be honest with the end tech committee will also be. Consistently and yearly to make sure that it's up to date with current.
And you don't, who's on the head tech committee? Oh, you're doing all that. Let's see, there's about four uh, four high school teachers. Couple of middle school teachers and. Three, four, four elementary teachers, something. Those pretty big things.
Is anyone else in the board think we should add a sub for the board through this, this as well? Whether it be via the tech committee or an overall vote.
Approve the actual guidebook or approve the approval. So, so a third step between Matt and Mike and then the board?
Yeah, so there's like stuff or, you know, they recommend they could go and then that's if there would be two steps to work if they both were just in. Would it be beneficial to have a third step with more representation of that? I feel that it would. Only because of my concern with a lot of this stuff, it gets out of the wild and I really get it.
And I don't disagree.
Which would be easy enough to you, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to come back to a point that both that because for all this was involved. So you can also search up us in the location. But we went through the tech department, although it be out of. Yeah, or just with tech committee for example.
Right.
Yeah, I think like a formal vote, especially like if, if we got, you know, like they approved, approved and then. Especially if we haven't been involved when we do discussions and then so you, you know, we, it gets voted down. What we're saying that maybe don't trust the teachers, the people who are saying we're going to do this. I think we do have to be careful with that as well. So I think, I think it's more less a formal vote or if we just have maybe a board member in, you know, familiar.
It's similar to what you're even. Where it would just be brought up like one of us would say participated in this or two of us and it seemed acceptable. Discussion. I, I feel it would be important. Like I said, my main concern is like, sometimes the stuff gets out of the wild and we go back out. So it's important for the constituents to ensure that we get that stuff.
I just think the tech community in natural patient. Uh, or it's oversight. That's, that's kind of where I was going with that too, would be like that. Have to see. Just when I'm part of a, part of the tech community, you just don't have a newer problem without it.
I think especially as it's new. You know, new to the district, new to everybody. OKI is working on similar kinds of um. Tools and resources and and thoughts about what AI looks like in the educational setting. You know, it's all very new to you. So. It's fine. What one, trust you or two?
Oh, there'd be two, huh?
Yeah.
So are we able to separate committee and or are we?
Well, no, it would be, you would just be to the end tech committee.
We have to, okay, I was, I was a, I was a, we still, we're ready, a tech committee, we have a tech committee. Do you have a tech committee?
You do.
Do you want to? No.
Teachers.
Oh, it's just a, it's a, it's a, it's a school committee. So we have four, we just said four high school teachers, three.
Eight to ten people on, so they're down.
Yeah.
I would go. I'm sure the people would be interested as well. Yeah, speaking of that.
I don't, I don't, I don't listen, don't, don't stand by you on this. This, this is completely out of my own lungs.
I'll, I'll do it.
I'll get with Mike and most of uh regular is monthly schedule. Okay, that sounds great. Thank you. Was there any other questions for that?
I guess I didn't speak.
Thank you for your hard work.
I was in a mountain, you know.
Good, good. Mine did a great job.
Yeah, it was really good. It was really well done, so.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to continue?
I moved to adopt the consent agenda items from the regular list of the agenda and work packet. Offer as necessary action for these items and include the same limits. I'll say. They have a motion and second, we have a public comment. Any board comments? Uh, whether we doing to discard the, the district property, do we put through an auction? Do we? Throw it for a great roll up box, how?
We have a, we have a well-defined process for what.
It really depends on what it is.
Uh, but we advertise it and there's, there's a process.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? Will we bring it down to the votes?
All in favor of approving the consent agenda as stated, say aye.
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 All those same sign. There is something. Um. No prior business, we move on to the new business with the SMA architects.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm Charlie Franklin, the SMA architecture and design. Nice to see you all.
When we, it's amazing to see you all again.
Uh, today we're going to give you a update on our design progress uh for the elementary school. Um, we are at the one hundred percent design development stage. Um, and so we are uh. Working through what the, you know, the building is going to end up looking like. And uh, we also have an update on cost as well. Our contractor, uh Matt Sipanski from Landless is here as well, so when we get to the cost, you can grill him.
Bigger product are cheaper.
So uh this is a look uh at the entry of of um what we're envisioning for the new school. And we've been through a series of meetings and collaborations with our building company, um and have also gathered feedback. Um on our schematic design from uh. Teachers in the community as well as we have a public uh meeting. So you can see kind of our uh our main uh building elevation here taking shape on the right-hand side. We have a multi-purpose room. Um which would form kind of the entry prom and as you go through that covered entryway into the main entrance. Of the school, um who will have uh security vestibules. We have the admin wing on the kind of lower right, it's a little bit lighter in red color there um. Which uh houses all the admin functions right at the entrance, and then above that we have our library volume, so we have. Um you know, large glass and uh. Overeating roofs and and some wood structure inside of the library, and then as we move uh further down facade, uh. Turns into classroom pods. Um this large kind of black mass that you're seeing at the front of the building is a solar wall feature, so this is an opportunity for us to. Highlight some uh energy savings, this is a feature that uh we think would be great to have some signage around, something like that, that will. Um essentially what it does is it collects heat from the sun and preheats your air, that goes into your uh heating and um. Cooling systems, and so that kind of provides that little bit of offset there to um help with efficiency. Uh again, kind of walking uh up the uh. Front entrance there with um. A nice covered uh entryway or kind of using some wood to bring in the natural materials, um or also, you know, envisioning some nice uh bench seating. And uh hopefully creating a nice uh entryway into the, into the building. We're using kind of a combination of metal panels and as well as brick. Um so on this, what, this is the uh western facade and. Um as you can see, it's uh there's, there's some blank areas, but this is on on purpose because. We're planning for the second phase, so this will be phase one, uh where we have um two hundred and fifty students. Uh these blank walls that face west would eventually get torn down, so we're trying to use uh very, you know, cost-effective materials so that then. We can add that second phase to get us to five hundred students, and so we're um trying to, you know, use uh materials in a nice and. Um kind of interesting way, but not spend a lot of money on something that's gonna get uh removed eventually. This is a look at our playground area off of the north side of the building, so. The classroom wings where we're using some of the brick on the front side of that and then um using. Some metal panels and um you know, a lot of blazing and then on the far left here is the wing of our multi-purpose room. This would be a precast uh concrete uh structure that forms our multi-purpose wing as well as the stage for the music room. Um and again, it's intended to be added on to, so this door here that you're seeing would eventually become a corridor into uh what. Would be the full-size gym at that week of build-in, so we're trying to plan for all these future uses uh in this first phase. This is kind of an overview of the building on the site, um we have. So Frank Road uh on the uh lower left uh running, running diagonally um. And we have our teacher and drop parking um parking lot on the right-hand side. You can also see uh that we're creating a larger loop around the project for uh queuing for. All of the uh drop-off and pickup. Um it's like kind of the main entrance and our main facade that bases Frank Road uh with playground and uh. Expansion that would go to the north that faces the interior part of the school district property. Uh so for the future building sites of the. High school and middle school, that would all be to the north, to the west. Uh so on the far left-hand side is where you would see that addition of of uh classroom pods. When we go to a five hundred student school, uh also next to where that uh bus parking is off our. Left-hand side, and then to the north uh is where a full-size gym would be added. This is a kind of a quick look at sort of our primary materials. Um we would like to uh just state that the colors are not set, so but this is where we are thinking of uh. You know, using um some metal panels, uh some precast concrete, uh a little bit of brick and some special news uh. And then uh two different types of metal panel. I'm gonna let Lee jump in here since he's been.
Quite.
Uh quite so far and talk about our interior.
Yeah, so we'll go through some of our interior elevation or interior views, I think you've seen some of these, uh but they're definitely off. Uh so this is our main entry to the space here. That is the stair that's gonna lead you up to the top of where the library is at. Um down to the left, a little bit out of view, or the classrooms, the blue entryway right there is into a couple of admin offices. Um the doorway where the um teacher and student are at, that leads out to the playground, and then to the right. You can see a series of hooks and windows, and that is right outside of the. Uh at the end of that hallway is the door, if you go to the right, that goes to your music room. This is the multi-purpose space, so we do have this as um like your gym classes are gonna be here, it's also gonna be where. Uh kids are gonna be eating their lunch, so we have the cafeteria there on the right. Uh the stage with the music room, we have a large curtain and also a sound-isolated movable partition there. Um to really separate that, so you can use both of these spaces at the same time. Uh we do, we're trying to bring in some color into this space, you can see a lot of the tactile acoustic wall panels there, uh some painted structural. We already be using an acoustic deck in this space, um so that's gonna also help. Who sticks those cafeterias and gyms to prepare. This is one of the classroom pods. So three classrooms. Uh all open up onto the space, you can see they're highlighted with the lighter blue with the door. Uh the wood door, we've got some uh sidelines there, we're trying not to have windows within uh doors, that we don't have to, you know, provide blinds for those that are all sweeping around. Do that, so looking at some of the safety and security concerns here. We do have the larger windows above the lockers, and so those are. For the teachers to be able to look out on the students that they might send out into these pods and we've worked with. Their teacher, and then on the right here, you can see the glass is the corner of a window of our project resource room. This is just a look at one of the classrooms. On the left side, you can see some of the bookshelves that are top of our camp system that's under running the window. Uh we've got a very large whiteboard in screen wall back there, trying to still keep a lot of room. Uh for teachers to display our materials, every single classroom has the exact same amount of case work countertop. Uh bookshelves, just so there's equity across all the different classrooms. Um so here, there's also three bookshelves underneath that, uh the tables and chairs, the layout, of course, of the spaces, they're all gonna be defined by teachers. Uh we do have some uh concrete that's gonna come into the space or. I think we've got, actually got a linoleum coming into the space uh where the. The case work is at and the sink, and then that'll transition to a carpet, so students can come in. Their white boots, you know, try to keep that away and. Here's a look at the library and the drop-off location of the desk. So you can see we do have our tall windows here, we've limited those to twelve feet, so we can utilize. More economic storefront system, we have a little bit of benches, there's another view that will show. We have our main um, you know, learning center within the library left there, provided with a screen as well, and then on the right, we have secondary. Space, reading space. Um and then one other report, it's also from. The, the teachers with them asking is making sure that these bookcases can move. Uh so that they can reorganize the layouts, how they see fit, so they don't have to unload it. This is another look uh at the library, looking back towards kind of the main entry, you see. We've got some uh glass there right at the, the centers of teachers can kind of see the students coming in, but then over here on the right back glass. Leads to another reading note. Um that I think is in the next one after this. So this is the top of the stairs, we're looking down towards kind of the classroom weight there, we do have a little bit of an accent ceiling at our uh bathrooms. Will have uh full tile walls with kind of a gray tile pattern, you know, color still to be determined, of course, we've. Kept right now with green, velvet green, uh and some accent. You know, some signage, the library, some figures for the bathrooms, all. So it's kind of be selected, you can see on the stairs there, uh right now, we're thinking some type of decorative wall panel with the wood wall covering, uh and then also. Some panther footprints for that will be changed. And then this is that reading note that's outside, so this will fit about uh two classrooms is what we're hoping for. So this can be a space of. You know, a couple of teachers need to get classrooms together, there's a whiteboard that can have, this is either a reading or kind of learning space, we have a little bit of a wood ceiling. Kind of minute, what's inside the library, just at a smaller scale, we've got a couple of uh windows up high there to bring in some of that more light. Just kind of make it a nice third space. One of the other aspects that we did look at. For the district is the potential of just adding the gym wing, um and so when Landless presents their pricing, uh we gave this. Just the gym wing up there to them so that they could essentially price that, it's an eight thousand square foot gym, it's got a couple of bathrooms, has a PE office. Uh and it has bleachers inside of it, uh just a potential additional community aspect, um if this is able to be added to.
So the gym will be in the initial base instead of.
No, this is um. Yeah, so Matt.
Cool. Um yeah, so we worked um. With SMA, they got us the drawing sets, we sent out the drawing sets again to a lot of subcontractors, got some great subcontractor feedback. Uh this cost has ticked up about seven grand from last time. Um that's primarily a function of the exterior envelope and some other utility sort of items that we had to add for the building. Um that as we continue to develop and grow um the kind of scope of the project. We are finding these things out, so um. So on the building cost, uh we're sitting right around nineteen seven, uh site cost is three point four million. Uh the building soft cost ever made unchanged, and then that puts a set of total project costs, not including the gymnasium or the future gym. Of uh twenty-six and six. So um apparently that's about six million, six point six million or a bond um authority at this time. Um the gym alternate adds, so to go back to. Yeah, so this would be just the top right corner of the gymnasium up there bathrooms. Sorry, like, there occurs all that, then you did. Um so. Uh the gymnasium with the bathrooms, uh we have kind of a rough range of. Things about four point six and four point nine as well, that's uh so. Let's just kind of using some of our existing costs that we have as well as, you know, current costs that we're seeing. In the area or state for wood floor and, you know, um the other equipment that would be going there, so. So yeah, that's kind of. Where we're sitting.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's where we're at, and then we just also have uh another work session with you all coming up on the twenty-eighth. Um where we can dive in a lot more deep uh into kind of where we're at and where we need to, so just a reminder there, but. There's any questions, we'd be happy to take.
Looks good. Uh you didn't mention the weight code on the.
Uh and the library or? Yeah, so one of our comments that we uh heard last uh time presented was um some concern about the large window. In the uh library, so. Uh a little bit of, you know, safety concern there, and so one of the things that we did to mitigate that is, well, we've done a couple of different things, one is. Uh reduce the amount of blazing, which also helps provide uh additional teaching space. Um but then also along the windows there, we're planning for um. Some HVAC equipment as well as some bookcases to pull all the students off of that wall, so they won't actually be able to stand right next to the glass. Um which should help um kind of mitigate that visibility uh aspect of that. That uh that concern um.
Rock it, and you're talking about the lower wings, so you can.
Yeah, I just love it, so it's interesting. We don't have that in all schools, but schools up.
Yeah, um in Ridgeview, the, the wall coverings in the uh. In the hallway, it's held up really, really well, that's like a vinyl uh wall covering, and so. Um that's, that's an expensive treatment, but we're gonna, we're planning to use that along the bottom four feet to kind of help with that. Uh long-term.
I know we'll talk about this, we do. We decide. We can move concrete to the top, second floor as well as the first floor.
We're still waiting for. Brian to go review that and get the.
Okay, I think that's where we're leaning around.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Lee, Ryan and I just take a walk around, there's more cracking on the upstairs, but it, it's not. So much more that you really notice it, so. Yeah, I mean. But so the concrete floors, right, there's concrete floors in the hallways and yes, um and so we were, we went over to take a look and see if. I mean, we know sometimes you're gonna have regardless, but typically, uh if you're on the second floor, you'll get more cracking. Um and there are some sections that seem to have more cracks, but it wasn't. It wasn't like it drew your eyes to it, and it was like.
Yeah, I've been in that building so many times, I've never actually like gone down that close, because it wasn't very obvious, there's a heck of a lot of them, but it's so fine. You know, that's, yeah, so, yeah, I, at this point, I can't. Yeah, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, there's a, thank you, please.
What we find out next is the revision to policy. And we have a motion to continue. We have a motion to say. I don't think there's any explanation, you're needed, if you want to start a public comment. We have a public comment on this, so.
Uh my name is Drax, I'm the attendance and practice secretary of Goddave High School. First, I have a question, if we already don't allow cell phones at the middle school, why do we allow them at the high school? Secondly, one teacher told me she documented thirty times in an old class period where she had their cellphone use. Ten minutes between classes is a solution for students to have their phones, and when that happens, the negotiation process begins with the teacher. Example, the teacher will say, why are you tardy, put your cellphone away. Student, hang on, I'm just finishing this text or phone call. Students become confrontational, being told to put the phone away, then things escalate. Cell phones, in my opinion. Promote drama, bullying, inappropriate searches, pictures and cheating. Students are sent into the office for being in trouble, waiting to talk to administration, they're on their phones collaborating their stories. I tell them they can't be on their cell phones in my office, some students get very disrespectful, won't put them away, defy any adult to take their phone away. I've had students say, try to take my phone and see what happens. Our principal told some girls to put their phone away, that were in the office in trouble, they refused. She told them to hand them over to her and ultimately they refused. There are no set consequences, we're willing to hold it as a red line, and the kids know it. There are no set consequences they are willing to hold as a red line, and the kids know it. They text each other in class to meet in bathrooms and make TikTok videos, they and just waste time. Likes have occurred in the bathrooms and students video the event and posted online. One student at the end of the year wanted to get thrown out of class using his cellphone improperly, informing his teacher and other students. But when he was brought into the office for discipline, he recorded the vice principal's rant about him and then posted it on Instagram. As you know, that doesn't come down. If a parent needs to get ahold of their student, they only need to call or email the office. Parents can call and text their student. In the middle, they can't call or text their student in the middle school, and it hasn't been an issue. Some posts can create issues during lockdowns or shelter plays. Students don't have reliable information. And if they start calling and texting parents, it creates bigger issues. The school does have a process in place to advise parents of any ongoing issues. Will this be a process? Will this process be easy? Absolutely not. But I'm from the mindset of people who needs accountability for the majority. They will make your expectations. There will need to be a clear cost, clear consequences laid out and everyone. Teachers, staff, administration, and neither school board need to buy into this and make it work. It can't just be put on the teachers to enforce.
Mr. Bradkey. Randy Bradkey, I feel teacher, um. And I am a proponent for cell phones because uh cell phones. Are a tool for our students and for our teachers. Um, I teach woodworking. Uh, my students use their cell phones to carry their project plans around. Um, instead of paper copies. Uh, my students take pictures on their cell phones of their projects. I also teach computer and drafting where we're always in front of a screen. My students use their cell phones for a set screen um on those. When they're drafted. So it's true, um, and our kids are gonna live with cell phones longer than I have. Mine were tighter than all. I was a kid, but um, you know, so we need to uh teach kids how to responsibly use cell phones. At this part of. Best of my sense, thank you, thank you.
Um, I disagree with the comment that I should, oh, yeah, sure, and um. Uh, I disagree with the comment that it is a teacher's job to teach a child to use a cell phone. That is the job of a parent at home, and uh we've had cases even at our home where we have limits for our children on like. How much the time they're allowed to use and what apps they're allowed, you know, that kind of things. Got messages from my children at school saying, mom, I need you to extend my time because my teacher is making me use my cellphone for this or whatnot. Everybody else in the class is on their phone, but I can't get on mine. And to me as a parent. That's undermining my ability to parent and help guide and direct my child on how to use it appropriately. And then on top of that, as a sub in the schools. The one place I like to sub the least is the high school. And the reason being is because the kids abuse it like crazy. They will say, well, our teacher allows it, you know, we're we're allowed to be on a tablet at this time. And of course, if they are or they aren't, they're all gonna band together and say, yeah, they should be on our cellphone, you know. But you see, like, well, it doesn't stop. It's really difficult because then you're the bad guy. And nobody wants to be the bad guy to these kids. We want to be there because it's our job as adults to nurture these kids and teach them what they need to know. And when we are constantly fighting with an alternate source that's getting their attention, how are we supposed to do that? It is extremely difficult, and I don't think that. We shouldn't be teaching kids how to use the electronics appropriately. We do need to as adults. But there need to be a lot stricter rules than there are right now in high school. Hundred percent agree with what Rob said. Because being in that school, I have seen it, and I have witnessed it through my kids. And it's, it's hard. It's hard when you have adults telling them, you they have to use them or allowing them to use them. And then we're trying to do some responsible, you know, good habits, that they're not addicted to these devices. It's very contradictory and it's extremely hard to navigate, so.
Um, my question is really, is there a process by which teachers ask to have allowances? Is there. A process for kids don't have a phone?
When we discuss this a little bit.
Okay.
They were asking questions here, so, thanks. Any other public comment before we continue with the board?
I am in a coffee, my daughter's a junior, and then your name was Anna too. I don't want to say the same thing, just be a parent to represent, like. We have worked so hard at home to raise a responsible child with her cellphone. And it feels like she goes to school all the time, and that's just kind of thrown out the window, and it feels like it is backtracking on all the work we've done. At home, um. We tracked, so she didn't get a smartphone until she started high school, and we tracked, you know, we looked. At how many pickups she had on her cellphone that first week of school, so just like. Clicking on her phone to check notifications, she had four hundred during her school day. And so we asked her like, well, do you get to have your phone out? She's like, well, yeah, we can just have it on the desk. So even just having it on the desk and not even using it, she's checked, I mean, I don't think she's alone, and that's just constantly checking. To see if she got a text or whatever, um, and that's, that's scary, and I think that's what. Is scary as a parent, so that feeds into anxiety and mental health issues and. Yeah, I just wanna be another parent to say that we're working really hard, um, so I hope that this school can honor that. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I'm a Belgrade high school teacher, even though I look more like a. Uh, I do debate standing up. I would also like to stand up and uh advocate for stricter. Guidance and rules with cell phones in our schools. Uh, yes, we have classes that use them and utilize them effectively. Uh, we have a lot of classrooms from what I see and from what I hear that don't. And it's not Randy's class that we're fighting against when we ask them to put their phones away and focus. It's all the other ones where they're getting those four hundred checks and taps, and we try to do cellphone hotels this year, um. From my perspective, they're challenging because it still feels like you're fighting against the other people who aren't making them put phones away. And so that battle that happens in the office happens in a lot of our classrooms. Um, so I guess I would advocate for figuring out what restricting it looks like. And then we need teacher buy-in, admin buy-in, parent buy-in, so that we're all supporting the same goal, and when they go to the office. Things really do happen, um, that everyone is supporting the idea of restricting phones, if that's the way we go. Because it's very challenging, and it gets really old to be the teacher asking them to put their phones away all the time.
Appreciate your call, thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Foster. I am both a parent of children in the high school and I'm the IT director. Uh, listening to some of the comments that have been made, uh, I. I can see both sides of the issue. Uh, I have. Both of my children that are in the high school do not have cell phones. Uh, so I have no plans on giving them a cellphone at this point. Uh, so my. I guess my question as from a parent's perspective, I, I want to limit the amount of electronics that my children have. Being the IT director. Is completely different, because my children have laptops at home and and tablets and all these, but. I, I beg the question, if teachers are relying on students to bring their cell phones to class. Why am I not hearing a need in the classroom that the IT department is not fulfilling? If there is a need for some technology in the classroom, that teachers are asking students to have their cell phones for, well then. As a district. I think we're missing an opportunity as the tech department. Why am I not filling the role? And I don't know if somebody doesn't tell me that there's a need. So. That's. Kind of my perspective.
Anyone else like to comment? One once, one twice. Okay, it comes back to the board. Any further questions or comments for D D thing? The one thing that I had a parent, like you have one of me. And uh, they they asked me about this, a parent who was visiting about this, and the one thing that they commented, I mean, I've heard. You know, the same kind of. Comments here, but one jumped out to me was that I had a parent say that they've tried multiple times. To call them into the school to get ahold of their student for whatever reason. And that they weren't able to get through the school system, somebody didn't answer the phone or whatever. And so they wanted, you know, shooting a text or whatever, and if we go through and make it more strict, I think we need to. Come up with, I don't know if we need to. Put a, a, a. A switchboard in where the, all the phones, all the calls to all the schools come into a. Couple of people whose sole job is to shoot them out or what, but. You know, calling into the school if. Roxy's busy. For whatever reason, that call's not being answered, and there's nobody else grabbing it, and that was something that did jump out to me. If there's an emergency, you know, you're not getting ahold of some.
Maybe it's that significant, which would be worse on, um, which we're able to get, so we need. I know I helped high school and I never had a problem getting through, I called two or three schools.
This is what a parent was telling me.
Yeah, I know, but I feel, it's one parent, so I think one of the things that we see, like especially if we're practicing on the campaign trail, kind of happens, that you can use that to the school. But that happened and it'd be back on the dump. So like, yeah, you can reach out to us, but ultimately we don't know what was going on at school at that moment, and I don't think that facilitates us saying. Yes, like when we're hearing from a lot of teachers and parents in our community, we're saying, you know, we really do need to kind of do something. Just for the off chance that Roxy can't answer the phone, because I, the, whenever I called, she's returned mine at all within five minutes. Yeah, like, you know, so it's, it's hard for me to like give too much credit to like a single parent, and especially if that parent didn't then. You know, if it was that large of an emergency, you would, maybe, you know, there's others, like I know you could, you know, get ahold of TD at the.
Oh, this parent did tell me that this was in the Godfrey era that this came about. And said they did contract Godfrey. But, so, so there was some follow through to it, but I guess they, that, that was their point was that. They needed to use, they, they needed to have, they had to use the back door because the front door didn't come up. And so we need to fix the front, is what I'm saying, we're gonna make sure, you know, when I, we have the front door person right here, we ought to ask who. You know, what Roxy says.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
You have a voicemail, don't you, Roxy?
I do, so. I know we were talking about that person, um. Uh, that person came in and talked to Godfrey because I didn't answer the phone when she wanted me to. Uh, we did have something going on in the office at that time. I didn't get right to it, but that person did come in and. Chew me out and tell me she could do my job better than me, whatever, and I'm like, oh, you don't fill out an application, that's fine. The phone system, if it, if I don't answer. Uh, well, number one, on the phone number got corrected, so if you call in, it goes to my email. I see it on my screen, I have two computer screens going. So it goes to my screen, or you could leave me a message if I don't answer. And you leave a message, other than that, it rolls over to Shannon the man in front of office. And if she doesn't answer, it rolls over to the registrar.
So that it does roll through.
And if we're not answering, it's usually because something is going on, we can't, I mean, we have most a thousand kids, so I can't get her to talk.
And I understand, I thought that's maybe.
I would like to ask how many emergencies a parent has called in since I've been there.
Actually, I had a question for you on this, let's say there is something, you know, urgent, um. And a parent would call and tell you, like, if you needed to contact the student.
Um, well, usually I left the principal known right off the bat, then they come down to the, uh, teacher and. If they, if we need that student, we'll pull him directly out. The S R O is always in my office or in the school. He's on the radio. We have a cellphone. Um, there's no reason we can't give a student at that school that ever be.
I think for a director, we're trying to point out that our desktop still work, and they also use locky toys.
Yes, the other thing is we have some parents come in and they'll, or they'll text their kid and like, I need you out early for lunch. So they'll tell their teacher, I need you in early. Well, I haven't let the teacher know that because I haven't gotten the message in the morning or by note or. Whatever, what if you just let that kid leave? Because if they leave and something happens, what would you do? You'd sue us. Because we didn't have permission to let your child go.
Is that a kind of a follow-up question, like how do you determine urgency, was like, what's appropriate for going to school?
Uh, give it some medical emergency, uh, a death in the family, um.
Not getting out early for lunch.
Yeah, it's not too hard to arrange students to get out early and go get coffees, because I'm telling you, this is what happens.
Let's see a quick question. Don't, don't all the teachers still have their own numbers in their rooms? They're still out there.
Yes, and it's on, also on that, you can, um.
If you know.
Call in if you have their extension off the handbook, they'll go right to that. I'm not saying they're gonna answer because they're teachers.
Right. But that is an option too.
So there is a, when you get into the classroom, the balcony.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, uh, the front door is always open, but once the bell rings, you can't get into the school or you're not supposed to, back door or any door. So you have to come to the office, I'll let you in, or the S R O or Shannon the man, and we always try to pinch hit each other. So there's always somebody right there. Now, if we have a kid that goes down. Uh, if the nurse isn't there, I'm next in line, if we have a kid with a seizure or anything, I'm gonna leave my office to go help.
Is, is this true of all the, the middle school and?
Why don't you end that question if you didn't know?
Yeah, I don't know that.
Yeah, why don't you have a seat, Roxy, thank you for.
Is this true that there is, are multiple lines of defense in every school?
So, the, yeah, so the three secretaries of the middle school are all in that front office, so they're just automatically, you know. Do that, do that work. Um, elementary schools have one principal, one. Uh, secretary, their administrative system, and typically there's a nurse or a health aide in there too. Um, but you know, if, if the office without the uncovered, they will possibly be.
Okay, so there is, because that was, that was the comment that I dropped that kind of jumped out, I mean, and they meant emergency. If you can't get ahold of some, please, there. So it seems like to me, I mean, most of the. Comments against us and running a policy from high school, it seems like it's working everywhere else, so. I think that's one thing, because you've got the genie in the bottle at the middle school. So you've got to be asking yourself the question. Why would we let the genie out of the bottle and get it to the high school? Because they've already been turning it.
I think there's a, there's a, um, a practical challenge with that, and we talked about this at the work session. That at the middle school, students are still using lockers. So it's natural, their phone is in their backpack, it's in their locker, it's, that's more of a natural kind of break. And at the high school, students have moved away from using lockers. Some still choose to use lockers, but most of them do not. So then you have your stuff with you, right? So you always have your phone with you. It, we don't have that automatic barrier like we have at the middle school, so I'm not saying that it doesn't mean we can't implement and, you know. It create procedures that have a stronger policy that says no cell phones, there's instructional time or, you know, whatever points. I'm just saying that it's biologically harder because the students have been following it.
Yeah, I think Melly made a great point, though, and she says. You know. You have to have consequences. There has to be real consequences. Or when kids don't do what they're supposed to do. And. We have the, we have to make sure that that gets. Uh, enforced. Because if we don't enforce it. You know, and then we throw all of that on, weight on the, the teachers, it. In fairly short order, it's to be a free for all, because nobody wants to put up that kind of harassment, if nobody else cares. So we want to make sure that. We have consistent, uh, uh. Set up rules and. And, and condition that happens when this is broken, first time this happened. Uh, second time, something else happens. If you refuse to give your phone to the. Teacher, you refuse to give your phone to the. Uh, principal or whatever. You know, it's insubordination, it's a different activity, and we have to make sure that. You know, it's insubordination, it's a different activity, and we have to make sure that they're willing and ready to step up.
Can I ask a follow up question or point out a lot of them, sorry?
No, I was gonna, I was gonna, go ahead, you're on this page, so I'll.
Well, I guess the question was like when I read, I mean, the teachers make a good points, very multi, you know, this too, and you're not supposed to say. She made a good point, that's a bad feature with some apps that you can use on the phone. And I think Didi's draft of this policy allows teachers to use their phone to prove, is that correct?
We can add that, maybe we don't have a.
Yeah, it seemed like that was a good case, like when I originally read it, I thought like, careful, this, this gap would be to allow that. But I was wondering how you'd even enforce that, what penalties they.
Enforce not using it very fast.
Yeah, or not, it's okay, yes.
I think the other thing that Mike brings up is, you know, we could do a lot of the same things if we had Chromebook available. For kids. And begin, given the fact that some of the kids don't have cell phones at school. And the fact that the Chromebooks, we have the much better control of what people are gonna be out of access to. In the Chromebook than we do a private cellphone, it seemed to me that that might be a better choice. Maybe it's not the, maybe you've got some leaflets on where the other, but it ought to be, uh, something that we consider as a more. Normal ways than say, have cell phones be made. Uh, available at the request of the. Of the teacher, because as someone that was here talking about, um. You know, being a, uh, substitute. I mean, it's fair game, I, I mean. You know, you gotta, first of all, you gotta make sure that you have good plans for your substitutes, but secondarily. They need to know, there's a, you know, there's a new sheriff in town who respected this rule. And if it's not spelled out to them, that this is from somebody, then it's not, and it's not on them.
Yeah, well.
They hits on us.
You get the kids, they're just gonna take a while. But what would the proposed policies be, the record?
So, the board's responsibility is to create the policy. And so what we're doing is looking at, is are there language changes to the current policy, you adopted this policy in Sep- last September. There was already a lot of discussion nationwide about cell phone policies and, um. NTSBA released some variations, three different variations, and void selected the, the middle variation. Um, but I think there are some things that we recognize could be, um, cleaned up in the policy to provide more clear language about. Our kids allowed to have during transition time or not. Our teachers allowed to petition the principal to allow them to use cell phones for certain instruction practice, things like that.
And that's, you know, I guess, in around two minutes, that's another question right there, is that, is that not what they are doing in the school? Is that not what Julie and David said the other night at our meeting? Is that you can give permission to use cell phones? And you go, that kind of information then would come to you ahead of time in this class. X, Y, and Z, how do you feel about that?
Um, well, I mean, honestly, the kids, like you were saying, you know, miniature, say, miles, so even if they're allowed to do it, they're gonna be doing stuff on their phones. They're not supposed to be, and then you're still trying to have the monitor, I mean, the problem is this, most of these kids don't have any kind of monitor, you have to be on their phones. They don't have any kind of lockdowns or limits or whatnot, so they're gonna be back there scrolling Snapchat the whole time you're trying to say you're supposed to be on the app. Newsome, I mean, ideally would be great, but I gotta say, I'm more on board with, uh, let's provide them the tools. That they need within the school, so that we're not relying on cell phone, because at the same time, like that's.
Well, we, we actually talked about this probably a couple of months ago, because Mike had come to us to have the request to extend their capability. And the board's arguing it was, but why would we expand that if they're gonna use their cell phones, you could take that money, so. So that's a valid argument, but right now what we're at is, you know, like, the cell phones are on their person. And if they're there, they're going to check them, that's the problem we're encountering, so I guess my question was for long, Rocky's suggestion was, what exactly, what penalties to pay?
So, is the one that got approved getting forced?
No.
So that, I mean.
Well, it's been, it's been inconsistent, so we, we kind of, we did this in phase, because.
You guys approved it, but is the administration actually enforcing?
She was, she was going, they were getting stricter and stricter, but like, I'm sure my kids would love me extending those, but. You can see when it's enforced, because I got the splares, most of them are like, where have they, four twelve loving issues or phones and. I can see them having a fun test. And it was great, but then like everything starts creeping back in, and that's where we come back to the stage we need to clarify. So I guess what we.
So the board creates the policy, and then we have a group that's working on creating the procedures that go in the handbook. So that's our handbook committee that we've put together, who will look at the procedures for. What happens the first time, what happens the second time. So we get all that down in writing, um, we already have some of that built out, but, uh, it probably, it would be good to revise, revisit it. And then that goes into the handbook.
So I guess what Didi's saying, you don't really have a hard past, like three strikes, you're out of.
Steve, can I, can I mention one other thing, um? So we have some kids. Their parents don't want them to have cell phones at school, that's their prerogative. So four kids in our school brought burner phones to school and gave those phones to those kids. One of the sets of parents came in and. It became a big issue, now another issue with the, the cell phones is one of the teachers. Last, this last year took the phone away from the student because he was trying to teach and the kid wouldn't put the phone away. So he took the phone, brought it to office, told me to keep it in the drawer until the end of the day. The kid went on to accuse the teacher of breaking his phone, the phone's, uh, screen was already cracked. I don't know what the outcome of that was, the parent was siding with the kid that we brought the phone, whatever, so. And then one other issue, uh, we have a, had a high flyer, as you call them, last year, kid's always in trouble. Cell phones are not his thing, he can't stay out of drama, whatever. One of his teachers said, okay, you can bring your phone to school, be on it before the bell rings. When the bell rings, you have to hand it over to me in the office. I kept it, he could have it at lunch, and then he had it after school, you would not believe the difference in this kid's behavior. It was like night and day. And if you honestly think the kid's gonna keep a cell phone here, can they not touch it?
Thanks, Roxy. Let's see, so. What I was going to, we were kind of getting off on the weeds here, because we can't, I've just ran a comment, but we appreciate you. And it's awesome. Um, one thing, we didn't define an actual penalty, that was kind of the question I had.
No, that'll be, that'll be created in the procedure that's attached to your.
Okay, but for the community's sake here, one of the things we discussed a couple of weeks ago, um, there's. Also, there's always problems, but nobody uses pagers, I mean, we're. Um, one thing that was really, we found annoying is earbuds. Your kind of request, but I think we're getting there.
I would, I would hope so, I mean, somebody asked, actually, the young man asked me about this topic, and I'm kind of asking, I. Just more, but I would love to say, you know, why are you listening to music and still listening to your teacher?
Yeah, I think, you know, or. I don't want to speak to the entire board here, my thought is, you know, it's, these people are professionals, and they're paying and they teach their kids, and they deserve their. Now, another caveat, here, a request or proposal with Didi, I have those, ad language that's explicitly prohibits the use of cell phones during instructional. Unless the teacher has received permission from the principal, which specifically is true for this. So that could be useful for something like misdirection, that would force it. And then the final caveat, uh, ad language that explicitly states that cell phone use is not permitted during class.
Or is, would be explicit about it, whatever the board chooses.
Yeah, and I guess that was a question I had thirty two, I mean, how would you enforce that, and would it become an issue of scope creep where the kids are so busy tech? Checking their phones, they're related to class, and then what would you do?
So I think, you know, if we look at changing the culture of a building with over a thousand people. Right, there were a thousand people, and you include staff and students, um, that takes time. And it takes, um, positives and it takes consequence. And so, you know, we're looking at bringing in a guest speaker to talk about. How do you develop a healthy relationship with your phone? Because if our staff and our students are having the same conversation about what does a healthy relationship look like with the phone? Then it's gonna be easier to make the changes that we're proposing. So that's one piece of it, the other piece is recognizing that it takes time. It's gonna take time for kids who are addicted to their phones to make that break. And so we can, you know, suspend kids again and again, I don't know that that's in their best interest. I think we can recognize that change takes time, and we can put a bunch of things in place during this process to make sure it's happening and continuing. The, I think, the, you know, one of the important things in terms of us being able to, um. Provide a safe learning environment for students is to make sure that we're clear in policy. You know, can teachers get permission to use phones for certain instructional pieces? What are we gonna do about passing periods or not passing periods? I think if you ask me if we could just wave a magic wand and have all kids not checking their phones during passing periods. When their phones are in their pocket or in their backpack, I would say we're not at that point yet. We might be in a year after we do more instruction with our students, so we change the culture of the building. Um, but Steve, to answer your question, I think it would be difficult on August twenty eight, seven. Um, to, to make that a reality, just because, because of where we are in space and time.
The only issue I have with that is that it doesn't take very long. For them to go from no phone in the eighth grade to being addicted in the ninth grade. You know, I'm, I struggle with it, we can't, they can't get there that fast. They got there pretty damn fast. In the first place, and I guess, you know, I'm as bad as anybody else with the cell phone. Uh. But you have, but you have to say to everybody, these are the rules, these are what, these are the expectations.
I am looking at the policy manual here, and I think it may help if I just reference out, because I think. Our expectations are here, we just need to start enforcing. So bear with me here for a second. This is the, uh, policy thirty six fifteen, thirty, excuse me, cell phone and other of the consequences, normally I would read this out to everybody else, it's interesting. Student possession and use cellular phones, pagers, and other electronic signaling devices on school grounds at school's sponsored activities. And while under the supervision and control of district employers is privileged, which will be permitted only under the circumstances described here. At no time will any student operate a cell phone or other electronic device with video capabilities, a locker, a bathroom, or any location with such. Operation, they violate the privacy of any person. Students may use cellular phones, pagers, and electronic device signaling devices on campus before school begins and after school ends. So we've adopted this. Well, here, I'm, I finished, you know, just. Uh, students in grades nineteen, twelve may also use such devices during lunch. These devices must be kept out of sight and turned off during instructional day. Unauthorized use of such devices disrupts the instructional program and distracts from the learning environment. Therefore, unauthorized uses grounds for confiscation device by school officials, including classroom teachers. Confiscated devices will be returned to the parent or guardian, repeat, unauthorized use of such devices will result in. So it looks like we have a policy in place, we just have to still enforce it.
We need to add earbuds in, oh.
Yeah, well, that would. That was another portion that we wanted to discuss, I guess. So they would do a remove reference to pages to this. They would add the reference to your bills. Ad language that explicitly prohibits the use of cell phones during instruction, it's not unless the teacher received permission, permission from the principal. And finally, possibly have my explicitly stated cell phone usage not.
The only thing I'd add to the, to the whole dialogue of yours is that we need to make, uh. Understand what needs the teachers have, will use a cell phone, and to make sure that we offer. Chromebooks. As best we can, you know, some applications, so that they have access, everybody has access, that not only the kids that have the cell phone. But the kids that don't have it.
Mr. Ack, you would, Chromebook was worth in your case?
Probably. But I, yeah. Cell phones are easy, I think, that's good.
Yeah, but if, if you had access to that, you could make that switch, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're sorry, that's, we're still asking if they use their cell phones to work, so, sure, the answer's still.
Well, it's about setting the picture there, correct? It's about, well, they take a picture of what they're trying to work on, and they set that there while they're drafting, correct?
So, we have.
Sorry, can you come up, because the people are, we have to record.
So, so in CAD, but so, uh, their drawings are up on. And so, um. With drawings that they're trying to draw. And then I have paper copies. Also, the kids can have the paper copies, a lot of kids don't wanna do the paper copies, they wanna do, uh. The electronic copies, you have one screen that you pretty much gave the whole screen for. Um, to, to your drafting, so they'll take their phone, and then they'll go to their group classroom, you'll have it on their phone. So they have basically a second screen.
So it's just, okay, so it's, so they'll call the classrooms, it's like they cut up.
Yeah, so if, yeah, their group classroom up on their, on their cell phone, so they have two screens. Yeah, so actually a CAD of these, you have two strings with.
Okay, any other board questions for Didi? Or comments? So if I'm reading this correctly, our motion would include those potential positions whilst we have noted them, just a bit.
Taking this language into consideration for our vision. That she gave us off.
Yeah, there was, there was similar language in the board book, I think that's the, that's the language that's seen, she was saying, so what I, what I heard was. We're changing out the dinosaur pager for earbuds. Um, we are including, uh, just a, a statement that says that. That includes no cell phones during transitions, just to be clear. Right, because we already said no cell phones delaying at the high school during the, um, school day except for the. So it's already in policy, but it helps for clarity's sake, I think, if, if the board chooses to say we're not having cell phones after the transition comes. Then, then it would help to put that, to be clear about that. And then the statement about, um. That, uh, cell phone use in the class is not to happen unless the teachers receive. For, for an academic purpose. That, that kind of.
So we are going to take out that they can use it during transition. It is on this one. It was the, the hassle, that's, not in the old policy that we had put it in, it was in on a new one, so that.
So we adopted this, all those proposals, so.
Yeah, that was just draft language on the.
Yeah, I understand that, but I, I was going a bit, because I felt it was wrong.
Any thoughts? I guess I just keep coming back to the whole, just, I wish I knew what they were.
That's kind of funny, too.
It's hard, this is, uh, escalate, depending on how many times it happens and, and how.
Yeah. Yeah.
What the kids, what's the issue?
There, there are lots of examples out there from school districts, we, and we have, you know, we have kind of the semblance of that already. Um, so it, it's not gonna take much tweaking to, to, to get that. A concern of mine is during transition. That's about that, you go to the teacher's stand in the hall and seventy kids are gonna come by and their cell phones are gonna be out. Because, like you said, there is an admission. I have been sitting in class for ninety minutes, I just gotta see if John texts me. I, I don't, I don't know. I think the enforcement of between transitions and, and between periods will be a nightmare. That's my personal opinion, how good a teacher in the high school. I also hear what Roxy's saying is the bottom when they come in, and I think that punishment can be written right there. If you walk into the classroom and your cellphone is in your hand and not in your backpack, it goes immediately.
I've been, I've been mostly quiet on it cuz for some reason this really isn't one I get all passionate about, but I think what was just said makes a lot of sense to me that you're gonna have teachers having to please seventy kids in the hall that have their cell phones out at once. And I also, from the other side, from a parent, I, I can appreciate that Roxy's willing to go tell my kid to pick up a carton of eggs on the way home, but I know my wife probably texts our kids four or five times a day, and if they don't look at them until you know, they're running out of the school, it'd be too late for them to do whatever, or go to the dentist, or whatever that is. Um I, I'd sure like to see that not restricted, just, I, I think it's a big ask on the teachers, and I actually think it would be inconvenient for um, the family life, uh, kids at work, kids that take care of their siblings, et cetera. I, it seems like there's things that were maybe a, maybe a baby step, it'd be a better idea, but I should actually enforce it when they go in the classroom. Cuz that, that is part that does irritate me is when I, kids are told, take out your phones to kill some time, I don't like that either, but I've had great, my kids had nothing but great success in Maltese class where she uses phones heavily. And that class is fast enough pace that they don't get the option of sitting back on Tic Tac, Tik Tok after, so that's, that's my entirety of my two cents on it, but I wanted to get it in there.
I was gonna say, I may have two hung up on them using the phones in the hall because if they're tired, they're tired, and after a certain number of tardies catch them.
That's not gonna add on that, I'm sort of like of that if they do that, I think it's, it's kind of one of those natural consequences type names. I think, from my perspective, I think um it, it will be a challenge that um, will weigh heavy on our teachers. Um, uh, and again, like I said, I think, you know, we have the ability to change the culture in the high school, we have the ability to keep stepping this up. Uh, what we want is our students to pay attention in class. We want them to be healthy, we don't want them to be checking their phones four hundred times. Um, and, you know, so the first step of that to me is, you know, ninety minutes bell to bell, there's no phones. And, and that to me is, is a really important step.
When she said no phone, she means complete instructional use of that topic.
Right.
About no phones sitting there doing nothing.
Right.
Engage kids from the entire classroom.
Not ten minutes.
The idea is that it'd be so busy dealing with that.
And I would really rather our teachers be working on extending their lesson plans and creating extra activities than writing up kids in the hall. Yeah, like we're all being, you know, I, I know that that's, that those are the values of this. Absolutely, we wouldn't be having these conversations in those ones for that reason, absolutely.
I was just gonna say, I agree with what Frank said, I was the vote to approve this with the language that um, explicitly says so.
Do you want to vote on three and you vote on one?
I don't know, does anyone have a proposal on that? Or what are your thoughts on some of these rock and everything just kind of go through their day?
Well, you know, I think unfortunately the five, no, the three with even for any. Uh, because, which is a big surprise, I'm sure. You know, I, I get what you're saying about teachers doing uh, monitoring the hall or something with cell phones. I don't expect that's part of what we're really talking about here. I think you're saying to the kids, we allow, we allow you these periods of time to do it. And you're uh, and which is before school at lunch, now. Um if you say it's okay for you to use it between classes, you're gonna open up a can of worms, it's gonna be really, make it really difficult for the teachers to manage the time between the start of class and the end of class. Uh, in my opinion, as you're, you're, you're relaxed, we've already seen this already. It's, at, at the end of the day, it's not as much about what this standard is. It's about applying a, a consequence for not following the standard. And I'm, I'm sorry to say, but we're not good at that. And the teachers get that landed on them over and over and over to the point where they just stop. Hey, I'm not paid enough money to do this on a consistent basis, so nobody else cares. I'm not doing. Um, you, for me, you should have to have set really clear uh, rules. And then you have to tell the teachers, we're gonna, we're gonna step up to this, and step up to uh, if they're doing something in the class, I agree with what you say. We probably only really can control what they do during class time. But if you tell them they're gonna do it for ten minutes in between, it's not ten minutes. Uh, you know, it's twenty minutes, it's, hey, I gotta, I need to go to the bathroom. So what do you think, I don't see it. It's just, this is the way things start to get bigger and bigger and bigger, person back out of, completely out of compliance and But for me, it's about write a strict rule, do the best you can to monitor the, the time they get there in the classroom, find the leave. And uh, you know, we'll, we'll worry about the rest of it later. Uh, I get what you're saying, make the rule, nobody, nobody's gonna follow it anyway, but I think you're kind of into that mode anyway. I mean, if you say you're gonna do ten minutes, it's gonna be a lot more than that.
Yeah, it's like, you know, give it, fucking the give the master cookie, is that the one?
They, they kind of give you all the rules, kind of like thoughts of doing that, but I think I've been a school teacher for a hundred years. I think you get out kids exactly what you expect from them. And um I think if we nicked out the bud, I, I think that's where that rule, that consequence starts. If you say you have this honor and this right to use your phone in between classes, you blow that by even showing up with it in your hand, making some excuse, it's gone. It, it's set up in the rules. Because somehow, there's gotta be a burden on those kids to make a decision to do the right thing because it's the right thing to do. And they got to start doing the right thing because it's the right thing to do. And if we're the ones that are always there with the, our till of the hunt asks. Um, and I also hear, I understand for side, rock, and trust me, I do. But I, I just really think sometimes um we, we, we take them in their restroom, we send them out at eighteen and said, you're an adult, go out there and do it. Well, if we're gonna make adults out of them, let's, let's let them follow their face a few times. Let's, let's handle some consequences and yank them in. Because I, I think you're gonna have parents like Frank, uh, maybe other parents out there that are gonna be I can't even communicate with my kid now because, you know, we need S one and Z, but we don't have that opportunity anymore because I needed them to have a message at two o'clock and they couldn't get it, whatever. I, you know, I don't know how that, that all play out, but I, I
I've got through for four years in, or in middle school.
Yeah, I, I hear that, I heard that, you're absolutely right.
It's, it's whatever you wanna do, uh, it's not, at the end of the day, it's not this it's not what we say here, it's what we do. I wish I was more top
Make them say it's gonna be a front.
I'm willing to be the bad guy here.
I don't think you can do that, I think
No, I know, I know I'm not, I'm too disruptive for these kids, whether they like it or not. I'm a teenager, I, I've got grandkids that are teenagers, I know all about teens.
I think anyone who's say well.
What's that? I think the only thing, but I think right now, we're in agreement with the ninety percent of it. You know, we're hashed out, just by literally one casting period. So how do we wanna, do we wanna split up the ninety?
Just make, make your motion, say one or the other.
Well, we already made a motion, so that's what I was trying to engage, cuz sometimes you don't have a little wish we were going to win until we have a discussion. We hear from everybody.
Just, just tell us what it is and we can vote on that.
What did you wanna say?
You know, if they must have proposed this, like we did with like allowing the eighth grade sports and seeing what happens if we allow a passing period, but I think you do need to put some sort of consequence, I mean, a strong consequence. Yes, I think you do need and say like, well, what happens if, you know, um, students continue? Yes, like you say, not even during passing periods, students don't have a bunch of class, I don't, right, they're gonna have it in their pocket or in their backpack or cuz, you know, it's the bathroom thing, they're probably doing that, you know, texts, right? And so I think giving them, saying we trust you enough with this period of time, but what we're saying is in return, you cannot have any class. And I don't know if that means like, um I don't know if that means, I don't know how to, you know, cuz I have a view about, we need to give the students, like we need to say, we have something, you're you're getting older, over giving you a little bit, but how would we also say, if we take advantage of that? You know, because we know they're gonna do it anyway, right? The thing is, is like, we can say zero cell phone and the, the, the truth is, is that's, that's just not gonna happen.
Yeah, I think, so we kind of talked about this in the meeting too, about how they, they quantify that, right? It's just gonna happen over and over, and then we tried, they tried to tailor the rules, they know, well, just some, like, you know, it's not like just speaking out there, it's like to drop your cellphone on or John, you guys, it's kind of, you know, that's time. But I think that's kind of up to them to figure out how to track that build up of the purpose, so once we decide, this is about, I'll give it for time.
Yeah, cuz even if we say, regardless if we say yes during passing or no during passing, the fact is that what it comes down to is however we decide that, or working with, so there's gotta be some consequence either way, or else we say, oh no, no, no phone during uh, instructional time and there are fully no consequences. Uh, students are like gonna have that, and so I think that's what you, they would have to figure out.
What would we do, BD, like as board members, so let's just say, parent, the board member here, so it gets out of control again, would this be it'd go directly to you? So as a reminder, you know, if the board comes up with this policy in sites to truly enforce it, because it's not really enforced.
We can change it a lot.
We could, but it starts with her.
Yep.
That's her job.
Yep, that's my job.
So we need to be open about it and honest and, you know. We're leaning towards having our kids focus on learning, they're in school, that's what we stand for, it's okay. I don't know what, so you're kind of thinking you're against pass, uh, enforcing passing periods, you want it to be?
I'm okay with passing, I'm okay with, I'm okay with them having it during passing period, but right now, I think it's, it's a gentle love, I don't
That's where I'm at with passing periods, because we're not trying to teach the kids, but we are trying to teach the kids responsible use, responsible use is, hey, you got whatever passing period is, five minutes, you got five minutes every ninety minutes, you can use them, you know? And, and then they go away for ninety minutes and it comes out, so you got that ability to check in really quick, pop back out and go back into learning. Um, in that passing period, so I'm right now, I'm, I'm okay with passing periods, but not in the classroom.
In practice, to confirm those, your thought as well.
Yep, agreed.
Okay, so right now, if you voted on this, it hasn't started.
So, motion to approve the revisions of policy thirty six thirty, cell phones and other electronic devices as discussed, that's your motion. So, so your motion includes the conversation that you just had, which would be pager to earbuds. Yes. No self, or sorry, pager to earbuds.
What does that mean?
Like we're, we're taking out the word pager and we're inserting the word earbud.
So no earbuds?
So no earbuds, right? So we're gonna remove pagers and put in earbuds. Cell phones are gonna be allowed during transitions at the high school. And um, no cell phones during instructional time unless the teacher has received permission from the principal. Yes.
Yes.
So those are those, those three things are the as discussed, so that's what you would be voting.
Okay. I think that seems quick, does anyone have anything else on the board that they'd like to say before the vote? Oh, I'm being by myself. It's okay, like, you know, those types of comments and
Yeah.
Other than my dog. All right, so that brings us back to votes. Um, all in favor of approving the revision to policy thirty six thirty, cellphone and other electronic devices as stated? Say aye. Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes five, four. Thanks, everybody, and thank you everybody for coming and writing your feedback. Next by the approval of bus routes for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, Scott.
Good evening, uh, right now, we're moving forward with the routes that they were last year and part of the reason is we are still missing five hundred students, uh, bus registrations. Hopefully we get those registrations before the office board and we can possibly have some revised revised routes. Right now, we're leaving the routes, as it, except for E O one, which is the the van that we had, um, picking out some students out of the Ridgeview District and bringing them into Ridgeview right now. So that's a little bit of a mile, seven forty miles.
Were we having questions for Scott on the motion?
I motion to approve the post twenty five route, which increases mileage by forty nine days for the twenty twenty five six.
Second, your motion in second, are any public comment? Any board comment, questions? And I just figured the first question I had up was the, where the forty miles from, but I guess that didn't land, go away.
No.
Is it common to have this city missing registration?
Um, last year, the first round, we only had about eight hundred, seven hundred. And this first round, we got almost a thousand, it's in a message, uh, almost in the gym. I wanna get a hundred, so
Okay.
So they're trickling in, but not that we could buy.
Okay.
Anything else for Scott? All in favor of approving bus routes, as stated, say aye.
Uh, Frank logged off.
Motion carries, oh. Okay, uh, we're still fired. And now we're back with Scott as a transportation representative, any representatives somewhere?
I moved to appoint Scott Lewis as representative to the Gallant County Justice Pageant Committee for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. All second.
Your motion in second. Any questions for Scott before we approve this?
Well, sound like riveting media.
Alright, uh all in favor of approving the transportation committee representative, the state, so aye. Consider our district attendance agreements for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, we have a motion. Move to approve five non-resident student attendance agreements for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school years. Your motion in seconds. Hope there's really anything to ask questions about, this is just out of Mr. Prince's uh. Written by the town stable.
There's actually six, so let me just type out, so when you read, when you say. It wasn't your fault, we wrote five.
Um alright, you wanna revise the motion? To uh six students that we uh from our district for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. Alright, and we'll bring it back to your vote, all in favor of approving the. What a district attendance agreements, say aye. Both same time. Motion carries five to nothing. Approval of employee handbooks, we have a motion to continue. Motion approved twenty twenty five, twenty six, third party across by employee. I say the motion in second, the public comment on the. Employee handbooks. Back to the board, any board comments?
I did notice some typical errors, but I guess we need to copy on base type. Issues, but it was just, just small.
We'll try to find them or if you're not, you give them to us. I'll find them all circle. The new way of spelling.
This isn't the one, you guys.
Yeah, these are pretty um fat and dry from uh. And then there are a few things we added them. Uh movie notification, so uh no movies over that are really good. Can be shown unless you have parental permission and.
Shall we vote? All in favor of approving the employee handbooks, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Revision of policy twenty one hundred, school calendar date. Motion approved revisions to policy twenty one hundred, school calendar date. I'll say, we have a motion in second.
So the next series of policies are all one, the ones that um we've been providing information from both MTSBA and Cal. With policy revisions due to laws that just passed in legislative session. This one, um there's a new law in House Bill five ninety one that added Freedom Week to the list of commemorative days. Um that we celebrate in schools, um it also updated a little bit the language for Saturday school to say that. Um Saturday school has to be voluntary. And just some clarifications on the school for school year and extends school interceptions.
You can do Freedom Day, Freedom Week on Saturday.
Well, it's in September, so.
Last full week in September.
I was, I was reading that and I got distracted, what exactly is?
It's to celebrate um the traditions of our country, or the, you know, the. So um so sometimes people get delegated jobs, um Matt is responsible for, there's actually. Eight or nine listed um holidays, and so we need to um. Determine how we're celebrating at the different levels across the district and you, the board, will get an update on.
Okay, any other questions for Didi? Is there overlap between American and the inherited today and Freedom Week?
No, it's it includes Washington birthday, our day, like they as.
The American, yeah, it's.
Let's bring it back to your votes. All in favor of revisions to policy twenty one hundred, say aye. All close same side. Motion carries five to them. Policy twenty one fifty, do we have a motion to continue?
Motion to approve revisions to policy twenty one fifty suicide awareness.
We have a motion in second.
Sure, twenty one fifty suicide awareness and prevention, um this revision was based on language from Senate Bill three sixty nine. Um the requirements for suicide awareness and prevention. Um changed from um previous requirements where uh employees needed two hours of training every five years, and they've adjusted that to. A minimum of one hour training every three years. Um and the district has to make training available for every employee, working directly with students every year, so you would always have. We do, our principals do a great job of providing training for staff and um let's continue that.
It's just something, say, anybody that works with students will be required, like.
Any, any, all employees working directly with students, I guess you can decide what the legislators were thinking.
I I just wonder, are we sending the bus drivers this training?
I know, I think it'd be, I think it's a good idea. Personally, I I can't do this in this regard.
We can, no, and so are are.
Help us, you know, oh. Someone gets saved because a bus driver saw something, it's worth everything. My, I guess what I'm saying, I'm trying to make the point that we should have this. For everybody, not just the in schools.
I guess I didn't ask public comment, public comment. Bring it back to your vote, all in favor of the revision to policy twenty one fifty, say aye. All of those same sign. Motion carries five to them. What's next, we have policy twenty three thirty five, telephone Hanson, the motion.
On motion to approve revisions, policy number two, three, three, five, both of Hanson.
Motion in seconds. Policy has been revised by NTSBA to comply with permits or notices, parents regarding human social. Uh well, language, any public comments? Any board comments? It's back to your vote, must you want to say something? All in favor of approving policy twenty through thirty five, say aye.
So the next one, um. I, Frank and I had a conversation about it, he had some concerns, so I, um and we received information back from MTSBA. Today, but. Um so the policy was updated by MTSBA in April twenty twenty five, the school district has never adopted this policy. Um it clarifies standards for professional behavior with students when using electronic resources and social networking. So it's a policy that basically says. You know, staff can't be texting or engaging with students on social media. That is not connected to some educational purpose. Um and we are um moving to the parent square. Um app for communication, so we can track all that and have the ability to 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 keep an eye on it. Frank's concern was, we live in a community where people are doing multiple things, so we may have a teacher, an elementary teacher. Who is working with four H and. Is texting high school students because that's how they're communicating in four H, and so he had some real concerns with this, so. Um and so we hear that in Cal, we'll all request that she take those.
Would not be included in the court yet?
It is, and we and we have language around, you know, only using, or we put in language around only using. Art, but you know, the the district approved.
I I think that Frank is absolutely got a point. I mean, look at it like he said, you know, somebody that's a teacher and also. He, you know, teaches youth ministry or church, not text a kid.
So okay, so that's sort of just skip, we'll come back to that. Consider adopting policy eighty five sixty, um we have motion to.
Motion to adopt policy eighty five sixty, display of lights in the town district property.
We have motion in seconds. So this is about H B eight nineteen types of flights that can be flown.
You might have seen this in the news. It's a state law that um says which types of flies can be flown, and there's a list in there, the draft policy. And so it's a brand new policy for the district, brand new law. And um so it just clarifies what is permissible.
Any questions for Didi on this?
Did Rocky or Walt second that?
I didn't wonder, like, I guess I was trying to figure out, I haven't seen you here in my eyes or cross. But I was wondering about, I didn't see anything like if an FFA flag, an FFA week, is it allowed, you know, school? You know, it's not s- school thing, but or you know, school mascot or color, I guess I'm just wondering. Is there language in there to allow that, or is it blocked off? I didn't see it, and that's, that's where I'm going with this is. School organizations, or do they prohibit it from? Flying a flag, it represents that.
Does this restriction does not apply to flags recognizing official government entities, law enforcement agencies, military branches, or public service organizations, so. Those have to get clarification. And usually this is how it happens, right, there's a law that rolls out. People start asking questions, our attorneys, MTSBA and Cal, will send us clarification. Yes to this, no to this, so we can, um we can get clarification. No, I think we need to go.
Okay, any other questions for Didi? All in favor of. The motion to adopt policy fifty six, say aye. I'm sorry. Uh so.
It does like we have to, but this is just one I just don't.
Oh, even the law, and they're writing a policy to match it.
Okay, I thought that it was a law and we had to follow, I must make this for shit.
Yeah, I guess I go to the, like I said, the FFA flag that has been flown on FFA week. Or ever, for a hundred and twenty five years, and I don't see language allowing that.
We had a vacuum, no, you were a no.
Because I didn't understand, I thought that there was the. Um awful option, I thought it was this scheme down, man, you better do it, so I misunderstood that. Yes, that's okay, my council of public service. For age or, you know.
Correct, yeah, so she'll get clarification and she'll bring it back to us.
Are there any other questions that you have?
So what I read, it precludes like an individual teacher from having. Their own individual. Decoration of their room. As well, not just what the school district decides to fly officially. So that's a verification, I'd like, is it, what if the school is flying officially outside of the school? Or is it down to, does it not their apparel? But it said, it did, does not verify whether they can have that.
I think that one's answered in here, it's any property owned, least or. So. If I was to read that, could wear. Particulate number shirt. But you could, so if somebody complained, they could. Okay, and uh last. East is the building name, Old City Library. Motion to continue.
Motion to stand the Old City Library to the twelve grade school district learning center.
Good motion in second. Any public comment on the name of the Old City Library, Howard?
Howard Larson, just asking, are you not getting the. Like, do we wanna carry any of the like tradition of that school name? What we're beginning to learn.
To name, yeah.
That one is already named Qua.
Yeah, that one is the.
The city hall, it says on the front, Thomas B Qua or something like that.
What is, out of curiosity, what is the city's plan? Will they entertain those names?
I haven't heard.
So I guess the motion. Is to the name of library, the twelve grade school district learning center, if you feel that it would be appropriate to. Sound good, were there any second suggestions, Didi?
Well, it sounds like the.
I wouldn't do anything, I just don't want it to be. Crazy scale. Bellwood School District Learning Center, you know, with some of the first athletes and.
Very well, it's better. Okay, well, we can certainly point to do is you both, if you don't feel this is a good name. And bring it back, is that something? So all in favor of approving the building name of the library to the twelve grades. Oh, I'm sorry, Randy. Why don't I just miss you, you just start.
Uh Randy Bradley, um high school teacher, but um. If being in this building isn't pressing, why don't we turn it to our students and get some. My.
Alright, anybody else? Okay, so just remember, if you want, don't want this, there's going to, and you'll come back this. All in favor of approving the building name for the Old City Library, say aye. All of those same sign. Looks like we're coming back to you with more suggestions. And I believe that completes our meeting, thank you everybody for.